"The Constitution is due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Father, thank you for this beautiful day you've given to us and this opportunity to again come and serve the people of our community. Thank you for this blessing and pray that all that's said and done tonight will be in your will, will be with us all the decisions that are made. Thank you to each person here who's interested in their community to make it a better place, in Jesus' name.
Just making sure I wouldn't slip in the notch.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting. Everyone's had a chance to look at those. I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Any second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got a few things on the agenda tonight that we're gonna kind of switch around a little bit because some of the stuff that's on our own business, everybody probably does not want to spend the night with this, so we'll switch around a little bit and try to go down to our new business first, I think. So, the first thing we want to do tonight is we want to recognize Jamie Rogers. Jamie is our school resource officer of Jamestown. And if everybody's not heard by now, he's won a pretty big award that he was nominated for through Jamestown. And so we've got Mr. Wilkerson here, Ms. Diane here from Jamestown, and I think they may come up and talk a little bit about what happened and how he won this award and give us a little bit of information. Do you want to start?
Sure.
If you want to come up, Fratton, would be good.
Sure. Well, I'd like to begin by just thanking the city for coming alongside the police department, from the sheriff's department and the board, and providing an SRO. We've needed that for a long time and we're very grateful and blessed that that person was Jamie. I didn't know about this award until Jackie Cryer made me aware of it and he tells the story. We were debriefing from a lockdown practice and he and I and Jamie were talking about all the things that we needed to do. We looked at and Jamie was gone and he was in the cafeteria on his one knee with a child who was having a little meltdown. And Jackie snapped a picture and he said something about the award and I said, "I don't know about this. Tell me about this award." And so that's how it began and that's kind of was my mission after that to make sure that he was the one. And so we nominated and rightfully so. You know, I didn't know Jamie before he came as SRO, but he activated to that role very, very quickly and very well. And it's my thought that all SROs should be just like he is. He knows all the children. He immediately took over out by the road and I had done that and many of you have been through there and seen me, but I had stood at the road and directed traffic for eight years and it was a little bit hard for me to get right up, I know. But he said, "No, no, I'll do it." And I thought, "Okay, it's good, he can do that." And so he knows parents, he talks to people out there, he's made relationships and of course, he has been here for many years anyway, so he knows lots of people. The thing I am so pleased with and so proud of is that he has made being a police officer a good thing again for our children. And so many of them come with this notion that they're not the good guy. And that was one of the things that I... They're afraid of police and they've been, some of them have been taught to be. And it's a sad thing because, you know, they're the ones that we run away from the problem and they run to it for us. And certainly if there are heroes in the world, they are it. So I've just been so pleased. I think that good work should be recognized and strive to do that. And so I'm very pleased and grateful, just profoundly grateful that the Center for School Safety made the right choice and chose to honor Jamie as the rookie, which is funny because it's been law enforcement for a long time, but he's new to the SRO position, so he's the rookie SRO of the year for the state of Kentucky. So, very deserving, congratulations and thank you.
My grandchildren are very fond of him.
Oh, they love him and they all do. Do you like to say a prayer?
And that's all I would just add to what Ms. Brunchard said. I see every day the kids relate to Jamie. They love him dearly. He doesn't care to do anything that needs to be done. He's the epitome of what, how law enforcement should work.
And who are you, sir? I mean. Awarded by the great outstanding teachers who stayed at one point.
That's always wrong. That's not important.
It is not.
The way it's so important is having this young man in our presence every day. He does a fantastic job and I'm so glad that he was recognized for that. So, hats off to you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Judge Markham, you got anything to say?
I'm just proud of him. That's about all I can say.
Chief Carnson?
I'd have to say in almost 26 years of law enforcement, this is probably the most positive thing I've ever heard. We get a lot of feedback from the teachers, from the faculty, from the staff there, the parents. I think it's a perfect fit for us and the school, Jamie's a retired officer, you know, the title of the awards is Rookie of the Year. I think he's got close to 25 years. We came into law enforcement about the same time. And he's building relationships down there at that school with those students that I think are going to be long lasting. Our officers on the streets will have contact with them some way, shape or form later down the road. They'll know, they'll remember Mr. Jamie. You can be at that school filling in for him one day, a couple of weeks ago when he was gone. And I guess there was about 50 kids asked me where Mr. Jamie was at and he was coming back. So, I had to tell almost everyone, "I'm just filling in today, he'll be back Monday." So, but he's more than a police officer down there. I think I've said that before. Even though that's his first priority, he serves many year olds down there, so it's just a perfect fit for us. Thank you.
I can just say I've probably had more compliments about that than anything that I've heard. Everywhere I go, somebody comes up to me and wants to say something about how good at the job he does and they see him at the school, that they see him with the kids and it's all been very positive. So, Jamie, do you have anything you want to say or before we...
I'd just like to thank Ms. Diane and Jackie for the nomination, first and foremost. And even though it's an individual award, it's a group effort. It takes a group effort. And we're all just one of the family there, so that's the main thing.
Is everybody, if you all, everybody involved with the school, that just Donnie, Judge Markham, Diane, Jamie? Jamie, we used to appreciate everything you do. It's great to work with the city, to work with the school system. And we just want you to know how proud we are of you. But this is an award presented to you as Rookie of the Year, probably in the role of law enforcement within the school environment and paid for it and has helped the school community. So again, we just want to thank you for everything. Appreciate you taking care of us.
Thank you. One more. Congratulations, Jamie.
Good job, Jamie.
Next we have Mr. Al Weaver and probably a few people with him here from Real Java. And we're really excited to hear what's going on with Jamie. So, do you want to...
I'm just gonna pass this out really quick if you don't care. We just wanted you all to have a copy of our mission statement and I will just read it aloud really quick.
Thank you.
Alright. Real Java Mission Statement. Real Java will be an active, productive and responsible citizen of Jamestown and Russell County. Our most valuable assets are our team and our customer base. We will strive to create a work environment that encourages personal growth for each employee and treat them like family. And in return, it will provide a one-of-a-kind experience for our customers that we serve. Our market consists of primarily the local communities of Jamestown and Russell Springs. We will market to the influx of tourists at the height of boating and fishing season. Additional markets include surrounding communities as well as anyone within reach of our social media voice. Our distinction will be our menu of homemade items prepared using high-quality ingredients and presented to our customers with personal and friendly service. This will provide a variety of unique experiences, delicious meal and drink options for our customers, whether they dine in or take out. We will always review, reevaluate, and if necessary, make appropriate changes to accommodate our community and customers' needs and preferences whenever possible. Our contribution: We hope to revitalize and sustain Jamestown Square to seek collaboration opportunities with other local businesses and the city in an effort to bring growth to the community as a whole. And most importantly, to be a good steward of this business opportunity.
We do want to thank you guys so much. There's been so much support from you guys, from our judge, from Senator Max Wise, everybody just supporting us in the local community and the people. Makes it just feel like it's worth it, you know. You all know that it's been quite the struggle for us to get going on building and things. But I would like to give you all just kind of an update on where we're at and stuff. We, so you've probably seen dumpsters outside the building. We've hauled eight 30-yard dumpsters out of there, which is, you know, those are dumpsters that fit on semis. So, we've hauled a lot of stuff out of there. We've basically completely gutted the building. And we, us four have been a lot and tried to come up with the best restaurant style that will fit the community. But one of the things is we're trying to keep the building as historic as possible. You all probably saw the floor out of there, but we honestly had no choice but the floor. It was completely destroyed by termites. There was wrappers laying in the dirt and stuff. So, I see that they had tried to do repairs over the years. There was three layers of three-quarter inch hardwood flooring holding that up and that was really the only thing that kept people from falling through it. So, but that is now gone. But this one here had an idea that if we remove some of that plaster, we might see some of the brick behind there. And, you know, that's a big building, but we started looking into that and of course, there was brick behind there. And so we spent like a lot of hours getting all that off of there. We spent days just power washing every little speck of leftover plaster off of there and stuff. So, when you finally get to come in there someday, it'll be brick everywhere that was original from, you know, whatever. I don't even know, 100 years ago when that was built. There's also this really cool arch that goes over is the entrance into the kitchen. So, we're gonna try to keep most of that as possible. We are putting another bathroom in the main. I don't know if we're just gonna block a little bit of that, but we are trying to keep that, you know, as most as possible. But the basement flooded every type of rain, so we did a ton of work down there with sump pumps and things and got a new roof on it. So, basically, we're gonna have a new 100-year-old building when we're done. But you all's probably seen the sign. We're proud of that. Worked really hard on that. But, you know, you kind of see the wood we have out there. We're planning to finish that up with some stone and of course, we have to have the handicap ramps and stuff like that. We want to, you know, we're willing to do all that stuff. We want to do that stuff. We want our handicap people to come in and access our restaurant and things like that. But as far as, you know, we are waiting, still waiting for the permit. It's been quite the roller coaster with that, you know, as small business owners. That is one of our biggest frustrations was trying to get moving on that. So, we're on about a four and one piate. It's just waiting on a design and it get approved. I did get an email today from Senator Max Wise that they did reach out to the building code enforcement people, to a supervisor they have a relationship with and apparently our plan is now to be expedited. So hopefully, we might go get back to work here pretty soon. So, but again, thanks Tyler. We've worked great to work with, put them down the square. And, you know, we put, you know, almost 90 tons of gravel in that building so we could pour concrete in there when we're done. So, but that's kind of the update on the building and where we're at so far. Then I wanted just to let you all know that as far as like, we're our employment wise, we're trying to have, we're probably, we're estimating about 35 to 40 employees at the restaurant. So, we're gonna try to hire most of our folks from right here in Jamestown, try to keep everybody local and things. You know, she kind of mentioned in our business statement, but we do want to try to collaborate with other businesses on the square. And there are some empty buildings down there that we're gonna be pushing super hard to see if we can get some folks in there to just, you know, partner, bring the square business back up to where we're... We get some retail or something in there. We like to host some events down there and things like that. Oh, you want me to go? Okay, so... My agenda's everywhere, sorry. Okay, I do have questions for you all, just to start off with. But do we have, you all have, I know I've heard things about buying some, a parking lot to make more parking and things like that. But is there, have you all discussed anything about parking for that, this square area?
We've talked different times about trying to figure a way to provide more parking. We have thought a lot there, you know, behind.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
And I think we're gonna try to get that brick wall taken down there really soon. And if we can, you know, get that done, then, you know, hopefully we could get some area back there maybe. I don't know. Have you got any other area that we could look at that maybe that would open up more parking?
Unless we've done something up next to the firehouse.
The firehouse maybe. But we'll work, you know, try to do anything that we can to provide any extra bit. If we can get that wall down, that's good.
Yeah, that'll... We own that little block building back there. So, if you all were to take that wall down, I mean, whatever property we have right there, we'd love to get, you know, make that a part, part of the parking lot too. So whatever we need to do to help. I don't know exactly where the parking lines are, but we'd love to just, whatever, you know, maybe get a skid row in there, gonna clear that out, put gravel there and whatnot. We were wondering if we could, if there would be a way that the city could, maybe we could utilize the parking lot behind City Hall, I'm sorry, the City Courthouse right now. Especially in the evenings with, is there, in a way we could maybe do some signage, I would say, like additional parking in this direction for folks?
I think that's something we could just work on getting some of that.
Can you help me in lots of Justice Center parking? Is that what you're talking about? That's the...
Exactly. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, so you go, we will, you go on the, go past the square there and I think you turn on the little alleyway and it kind of goes behind the...
The old courthouse.
The old courthouse and there's some, there's some parking spots back there. There's some, you know. I know they're, today they're full. I know that there's another little area too, that there's like some storage units. I don't know if the city owns that or not, but there's a lot of spots right there too. But I think like, especially during like boating season and stuff, when we got the tourists here, if there was some signage and said, "Hey, you can park over here," maybe we could get more folks, you know, in the cafe.
What do you think will be your largest, a larger meal? Like, I don't know. Dinner's gonna be the biggest thing or do you think lunch?
I mean, we're hoping it's all good, but yeah, probably. Probably dinner, yeah.
Lunch will be a problem with activities.
Yeah, lunch will definitely be the harder of the parking situation. But, I mean, where we are now...
Yes, sir. We're gonna be open for breakfast, lunch and dinner. Our goals are Tuesday through Saturday. I don't know if we actually set a time in stone, but somewhere around 6:30, 7:00 in the morning to 8:00. And then maybe Friday, Saturday open to maybe 9:00, 9:30. Haven't really figured all that out, but somewhere in there. Trying to be closed on Sunday, just go to church and stuff and then have a day off on Monday. Just have a day off so that we can sustain this. Because the restaurant business is very demanding and we all love it, but it is good to have some dedicated days off and things. But that's our plan.
So you could, the courthouse, behind the courthouse, after 4 o'clock, there's nobody there. The neighbors come too?
It'll make it 4:05, Judge.
Just him. Then the, the Jewish will center is the same, I mean, they're going. It would be wide open.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that'd be great.
Maybe getting some signs to show that that's back there.
Yeah.
To show that there is additional parking there.
Right. If that's okay.
What about the art works building behind you? I have parked a long time.
Yeah, there's some spots there.
Probably five or 10.
Yeah, maybe once we're not open, we could utilize... I was gonna ask you all, for our employee parking, we're like, we're trying to figure out how to make sure that every spot's available for customers, not just our customers, everybody's customers. But I noticed like, there is a boat. It says like, I think it says Jamestown Dive Team. There's a big lot right there. Is that the city's? Oh, we can pull the park employees up in that grass area just to keep them at, like, out of the parking lot and stuff?
I wouldn't think, I mean, I wouldn't have any problem with it. I mean, it would probably actually need to be topsoil removed and gravelled out of there.
And that'd give you a few spots there though.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we could have like the, you know, 10 to 12 employee cars, maybe more. And it'd be nice to have to have them take the parking, you know, spaces that are dedicated to our customers. And we're gonna, we'd like to get with all the business owners on the square as well and see if we could come up with a plan to not have business owners park in front of their business. Like, let's park back here or something and then, you know, leave these for customers. What, I mean, anybody's customers, the guitar stores, the lawyers, ours, whosever's, you know, customers. So, I mean, that's one of our plans too.
Don't we have a lot of, how's working, why I said it?
We did, and then we got, I got to where the storage bins was and where those burn.
How about behind the dents?
That's what he's talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think the name thing is taking some of those places and showing that it's a base.
Yeah, like to put names, start dating for folks, yeah.
Put makes of signs, cover the car with an arrow pointing to it.
Yeah.
It's actually four fast spots that we own or that will be available, you know. Just get them, arrows pointed in the right direction, you know.
Yeah.
So get one of these guys that's not working and get them a golf cart and let them shuttle through and then get tips.
Yeah, we'll, we'll help, we'll try to see what we can do without some signings, but also see about what we can check out and see what may be available and how that we can... Have some spots at the fire department and stuff. We'll get with Chief Lenders and make sure that there's not an issue there.
When we have events right now, I mean, that's our biggest, where we're at now, parking is a huge issue because our place is completely full when we have events. And we don't want to stop doing, I mean, it's such a way for the community to come together and do events. And so we see them bigger and, and there's just the way that the restaurant will be light out, there'll be opportunity for people to be part of an event and then also just dining in and having dinner, not necessarily. So, I see parking being, you know, if we can pass the direction on that, I think that'd be phenomenal.
There's quite a bit of parking there too, in the parking lot there by the judicial center. In order to go right where we do the pressure and stuff, but like this. There's quite a few parking spots there that people may not realize that's...
About right across from the library, next to the beauty shop there. There's several lots of places there too.
Right across from the beauty shop?
Well, next to, you know...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's hers. Is it her?
It's ours.
It's ours?
Is it? Did not know that.
But yeah, we'll be, we'll be glad to work on that and see what we can get.
Oh, excellent, yeah.
You know, kind of, we'll figure out where we need the signs and kind of what needs to be built. To see what we need to...
Okay.
Get some signings up, some areas pointing to public parking.
Yeah.
Got to identify them at the parking.
Yeah.
And I'd like to too. It's something we've talked about in the past is once we get some of these businesses up and go up by the bypass with a big sign that say, "These businesses straight ahead."
Oh, yeah.
Because we lose somebody to ask the bypass and people aren't realizing that there's stuff here. So if we can get something up there showing that there is businesses and put some names up there, I think that would probably be a lot too. And we've talked about that, just once we get some businesses, you know, up and...
Yeah.
She's putting on a mute phone and it's going, "Mute play."
The main question is, you know, we need a stay full of lighting maybe on.
Yeah, so... So we are gonna have, okay, so we're not a steakhouse yet, but we got the trailer picked. So we're gonna start off offering 10-ounce sirloin and then after we get our feet wet and it opens about 30 days, we'll probably throw a ribeye on there or something else. So, but yes, we are, we are having a steak and we have, we're actually very excited about our menu and we could talk about that for probably a while, but...
We talk about it every week, two or three hours on average.
Oh, I know, is my wife wants to know if you're gonna keep the blueberry donuts. I come out with those two the other day.
Yep.
And I got a pinch off one.
We're trying to keep, yeah, our bakery, our bakery should expand and things, so...
Yeah.
We're worried about trying to keep up, but we're gonna do our best.
She said those would make sure that...
Yeah, well, thank you. That's very nice of you.
There's a lot of excitement that's all, I mean, people are excited that's all gonna be.
I know.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we're, we're very excited. I don't know, I don't want to take up too much time of your eyes, but I don't, I probably know we're not from here, from Nebraska. Go Huskers, just everything. I used to be a really big diner player, but it's just been painful, so I moved over. So we're we're watching basketball, UK basketball.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, um you know.
We'll have TVs at the restaurant.
We will, we will enough games and things. But we we moved here because we bought Tupper Point, um just, you know, it was a really exciting opportunity and we were we're kind of crazy anyway, so. We just said, well, we'll we'll move twelve hours cross country or, you know, just buy this park and see how it goes, so it went great and that's. Previously, we did run it out of restaurant for a lot of years and she wanted to get back into it, so we started off with just a coffee shop and it went into um homemade ice cream and some bakery items and then. She asked me to build her a coffee shop, so a bigger one, so I did, and then it turned into um I want to serve pizza and then I want to serve this and that, so I had to add in a whole kitchen. So now here we are, and so um when we decided to um we just want to be, we're very community driven, we want to be part of the community, um love small towns, and we just love Kentucky, and it's just great, you know, just right here. But we looked and looked and looked for this area and we kept, um when I first looked at the cafe, I'll be honest, I said, no way, no way, it's too much work and.
We were, yeah.
Yeah, we said, kept going back, kept going back, and I said, fine, yeah, and so so we we took on the project, of course, so. But um we we got into this, we we decided we wanted to um ask these two, you know, they're, you know, they're younger Christian, uh young adults that, it was just great people, but we wanted some partners. One, you know, we've been in business our lives, we did all kinds of different things, but it probably is a great way to give back to uh these these folks here and um. So we asked them to be our partners and of course, they're super excited about it, so, but that's kind of how this partnership derived and we plan on um always. Our goal is to always have some of us there at the restaurant, someone who actually cares a lot um to be there to make sure everything is flowing properly, so. We're, you know, us two will, we're actually gonna run split shifts, her and I will run, you know, the morning lunch shift one week and we'll do the, you know, the evening shift the next week, which I'm a little excited about, cause I kind of like to do do it all and. I love people and things and so so we'll have her and I are gonna do the kitchen and these two are gonna be the face up front, so that's probably who you'll see when you come in and we might be running out here and there, but anyway. So that's kind of that's kind of uh how this all, you know, where we're at and how this derived and and stuff, so, sorry, Grandi.
We're excited.
Going back, we do have uh we have a request if possible, um we would it be uh possible to uh remove the light pole in front of the cafe?
I heard I heard that mention, uh it's a block block.
It blocks a sign and um we are gonna have a lot of lighting on our building too, so we feel like the sidewalk will be nice and um led up, you know, um. And it does block the sign and it's it's kind of like right in the right in front, like almost, I don't know, I understand if you can, but I we just haven't, you know, that.
Would it uh be a difference or make a difference if we could get that moved down like where your building and the law office is and maybe right down the wall, would that get it out of the way?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yes, 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 yeah, that would be good.
We had talked about, you know, you said maybe cut some out and and.
Yeah.
I mean, that's doable, but I it may be better if we can.
Yeah.
When we first put up that little concrete.
Taking down maybe one thing, I don't know how doable moving is, well, that's run underground, all electric run underground, I don't know.
In the concrete?
Yeah, I mean, it's all it's all pulled from the from the metal.
I have a suggestion, I need to replace the two at the courthouse, give me that one and I'll buy another one to get me able to get it and we'll replace the two old in the courthouse so they make the cities.
That's good.
You don't know how much complaint I've got about that one that's leaning right there in front of the courthouse.
Have you seen how it's flipped again?
Yes.
So it looks like you're your problem.
I agree.
I mean, couldn't you put a junction box there where that pole is, saw out the concrete down there, put a junction.
Yeah, I said, yeah. I just thought that must be what you all want put into it.
Well, hey, it don't look like it'd be that much. That's a pretty good offer though, I mean, they're gonna be well lit, they're gonna be well lit, correct, you said, and Randy then said he would buy a pole if we'd give him that one.
I'm looking to get two to replace those ones over so they make the cities, cause if you look.
Yeah.
I mean, you ain't working close to what the cities are.
Yes, I mean, it'd just be a matter of putting a junction box where that pole is at now, sawing out the concrete a few feet, setting another junction box and pole on top of it.
I mean, I haven't run through there.
Good luck.
I mean.
I mean, I've got no idea what's gonna be there, I mean, and I don't think anybody here knows what's gonna be there, you start digging, if you dig something up, that's kind of that's kind of what we run into a lot of now anyway, we just dig and.
I don't believe I'd take a chance, I believe I'd just.
The lot, I mean, the the water is gone, so I know there's no water, I can't vouch for anything else that's on that square, but we killed all the water coming around unless there's some weird junction, you know, jump or, you know. Concrete or something that's running in there, so I don't know, I mean, but we've killed every water line that's coming into the square and it's running around the backside of everything now, so. I mean, as far as moving one, like I said, I mean, we can do it, if that's if that's what y'all decide to do, we can cut it up, hope for the best, I mean.
Yeah, that's.
You know, you just deal deal with.
I don't know if you agree.
Yeah, deal with it like I'm.
You know, stopping with the viewings of the concrete, we didn't have to.
We might let.
Trench it. Would you?
I wouldn't think, I mean, like all through the the concrete, get through the concrete.
Is there a light already on the end of the?
There's, I I believe I remember the light you're talking about, I'll just be honest, there's one on the end, yes, there's one on the corner, man.
You want me to show you?
That's the one, yeah, can you picture it?
Yeah.
If hers is gonna be lit.
Yeah.
If Randy needs one to go over there to match it before everything matched elsewhere, it'd make the square look a lot better if he's gonna buy it on the match.
Well, yeah, so yeah, I mean, just that walk.
What I'm talking about, you just have sawed concrete there for a few feet to get to get that building.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, you don't like sawed with concrete, you don't have to.
You could just attach, you know, make a junction with the current line and then run it in here to your trench and then just come up, I don't even know, that's maybe easier, like you said, to take that all.
Yeah, I mean, quite useless.
You could just, you could take it out and block that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Let us look at that out.
Okay.
We'll uh come up with something there.
Okay.
See what we can.
Be no different from disconnecting.
You all think?
The railing up front is uh pretty crooked, uh we could, I was just thinking, we got the city's um tractor over there with a chain, straighten the railing out and then just spray paint on or something. When you pull up, it looks, it's like bent and can hopefully have a lot of traffic coming through there, you know?
I think we also just kind of wanted to see like if you all have like any thoughts or ideas for us that like have been on your mind that we maybe haven't thought of and we were just wondering like, is there any? Feedback or suggestions that you guys have that you feel like would be good, that you'd like to see um from us?
I'm just happy that you're going in there and everything that I've heard so far, I just can't wait for it to get open and knowing what you've done down here when you're completely. Out and anybody knowing you're there unless they hear about it and find out where you're at and you can do that in a business, I can imagine what you're gonna do in town.
Well, what do people say if you don't do nothing else that I can build it? Touch your ear, have you seen that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just excited, can't wait for you guys to get open.
Do you have any idea on an opening day as far as?
Well, I get a, yeah, when I get a permit and they say I can get rolling, then I can give you an estimate.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be open right now, I have to go through the process.
I know, it's tough when you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been.
No chance we get you open about fourth of July or something?
I really don't.
No, fourth of July, yeah, probably not, I don't have, I mean, I only have a four.
As long as you just let us get started and then uh when they come and tell us no, you all stand there and say.
Trust me, we wanted to be open, yes, we did.
Are you like, by them having you to stay, having you held up, are you not allowed to do anything in there?
I mean, there's not a lot, very, very minimal, I mean, we haven't really done a whole lot in the last couple of weeks, we didn't stay in boards and stacking them up and just trying to get ready for when we can do stuff, but. There's not a lot.
The thing is, you you all do your own work, don't you?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I keep these open windows and I see all the boards staying, so every time I walk around, I'm keeping it.
Yeah, you're always welcome, yeah, absolutely.
Um I think another question we just had was like, as far as the square area, do you all have like plans just as a city for any future improvements or just any kinds of plans? That you know that are coming down the pipeline that we should be aware of?
We've worked on, we're hoping to revitalize the monument square, we're hoping to get some money to be able to redo that and really make it nice looking. We're also working on maybe trying to get a community center out where the motel, the Jamestown court was, kind of working on, trying to get a building, we've. Worked on getting some prices and getting some ideas, looking at some different avenues to go, you know, different ways that we could, and we're hoping that would just be a community thing with. An open kind of for um farmer's market, anybody that wants to set up on the side, just a community where people need, cause there's really not. Anywhere in Jamestown where people want to rent a pavilion maybe, that's kind of where we've been working on that for a while, trying to.
Yeah.
To get something that um you sometimes you start like, we're ready to some stuff like that and you think you're uh gonna get, you know, certain amounts or that you can do this and then. It's changed as to what percentage or whether you can use your land or not, so it's kind of hard to uh get anything funding right now, but we are working on that. Another thing that we're getting ready to do, starting actually next month, uh the third weekend, Thursday, we're gonna open up the square over in front of the judicial center. And we've had lots of feedback already on that.
I saw the post.
Anybody that wants to set up, we all have the electric and and stuff available, you know, it would just be whoever wants to set up, just to try to bring people in town. Yeah, if we see that uh we get enough people there, we need to expand the mass to another little area, we will, but we're hoping, we're gonna test that we can do and see how that does, but. Lots of response on that so far, I think we've already had some people call, they're saying they're gonna set up, so, yeah, that can be whatever they want, you know, if they, whatever they want to bring to town and set up.
Cool.
So that we're hoping that we get some people started, um what else, guys?
I don't know, but I'd like to try to create some events, like recurring events on the square.
That was kind of my next question, like, is that something that you all would like to see, like a reoccurring event on?
Okay, you know, we've tried to do movie night, you know, to movie nights in the spring and the fall and that brings a lot of people into town, but uh yeah, we're all here to. We we'd like to bring as many things in the town as we can that will bring people in.
Yeah.
So any suggestions you all have, anything that we can work on, we'd be glad to look at the ideas because trying to get Jamestown to grow and get people back into town, I grew up, you couldn't get into town. We couldn't find a parking place cause there was people and businesses up and on in the corner, but you know, that's changed, there's, it's hard to, it's hard for a lot of smaller businesses anymore because they're big.
Yeah.
Retails, but but yeah, any suggestions, we'd be glad to.
We'd like to see it like that again.
I, yeah, we would too, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was really neat, you were gonna go.
Yeah, it's like that.
Saturday evening, the sidewalk was just full.
Yeah, oh, gosh, I haven't loved that.
I would park my horse over in front of the porch.
Incredible parking meter.
When we when we do open um as training staff and as far as weight staff and kitchen staff and all of that, um we are gonna have a few soft openings and so we would like. Um for you all to come and partake in that um as a just some training, so just kind of know that and be able to look at, we'll send out some invites for that, just um we'd love to get feedback.
Don't change your salad. It's all ass.
We're gonna add some salads.
You can tell we have some well-trained eaters.
Well, we all appreciate you guys and all your support.
Well, we'll we'll check on the signage, we'll check on that pole, we'll work with Randy and see what we can come up with, what make the best solution there, but yeah, we're here to help with whatever we can help you all with, that's. We'd like to work with you anyway.
Uh we appreciate that, did you think that?
Is that right for you?
What's that?
We're trying to run the goat.
Do you you all have any questions for us or anything?
Just introductions, like.
Yeah, Alan Bieber.
I think Heather Weaver, Elizabeth Antle.
My name's Dylan Antle.
Are you all from local or you?
I'm local.
We, yeah. Wayne Antleman? Wayne Antleman?
Yeah, Wayne April Antleman, Wayne Car.
Oh, you're Wayne's daughter?
Yeah. Yep.
I'm sorry.
I'm here, sorry, Kevin and Vanessa Antle.
Yeah.
No Kevin, no Kevin Frager.
No Kevin Frager.
Yeah, yeah, it's cool.
Is that the same Kevin that got bit by rats? I don't know, yeah, I don't even know who that is.
We should have started with that.
Sorry.
Yeah, I started with that, I started with every time.
Usually you're harassing many people.
You go around, you go around. Brass could hear my name out there.
Nobody.
Uh, yeah, uh, no, I'm a deer deer hunting back then, but.
What kind of brother do you prefer, pheasant, huh?
Yeah, bird hunting's bad, I didn't do much of it, yeah, but all the deer there are so big, they'll dizzy cord, all that, that's all they do.
Well, Elizabeth's a star former fifth grade student too.
Oh, I can imagine.
I was like, I wasn't sure if you were gonna read it, I would be, he's the best teacher of all time.
He doesn't, he doesn't.
Still, if you ask, I'm still like.
And now everybody says, everybody that's got young kids, say, we just hope that he doesn't retire until our kids get there.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, we're all very well respected.
Well, just so you all know, we will be open at our current location until we move, Elizabeth and I are there every day, um Dylan's at the nursing home until we get moved and then he's, of course, at the cafe, so. You can get ahold of us, um if you have questions or if you think of something, um please don't hesitate to reach out to us and we are, we want to, we definitely want the partnership with the city, um so.
If y'all are stopping and everyone sees progress, come on in, just be careful where you step. And I'll give you a tour if you want, that's what I do.
It looks really cool, I love the brick wall.
Yes.
In the arch, I love that arch. What's gonna be on the side over there or the other, do you know yet, like, you know, there was the brick wall and then the other room, is it gonna be something separate there or is it?
It's all, well, it's only part of the restaurant, it's gonna be additional dining, we're gonna have TVs and and stuff over on that side.
That'll kind of be like our event side, like a little bit louder side and.
I wonder if you would use that for, you know, just this, yes, very cool, I'm excited.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you all, and thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm wearing one.
But we will, we'll get some uh.
Thank you.
We'll check on that pole and stuff and.
We appreciate that.
Trying to figure out some parking and what we need sometimes, yeah.
That's great.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Um I guess the next thing we have on our list is our dead room banner, and I think we've got ornaments, towers, dot.
Now, that was one twenty five, right?
Is it one twenty five? The banner, one twenty five?
Did we say it was one twenty five?
I I can change that to anything, I guess.
One twenty five is what we agreed on.
Okay.
Some kind of.
That's what I thought, yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, I thought it was one.
Was it an order?
I thought it was the hundred, but I I couldn't even.
I thought it was the hundred, but I, I couldn't even remember.
That's, that's what I wrote down.
I can look back, you do.
I think, I think it's a hundred. I thought that was, I think.
I was just trying to make twenty five. I mean, twenty five dollars?
You're catching on, Virginia. Said one twenty five in case something happened to her, and the city uncovered a replacement, so.
That's what I wrote down, it's one of the orders.
Yeah.
But it doesn't matter, we, I mean, this is the first time, I mean, we don't vote on it until next time, so, something else. It's ordinance twenty twenty-three zero zero one, ordinance establishing veterans banner program. Be renamed by City Council, Jamestown, Kentucky, purposes ordinance is to establish, City of Jamestown Veterans Banner Programs, honor and recognize the service of veterans who are honorably served in United States Armed Forces. The Veterans Banner Program consists of the creation and display of banners of honored veterans. The banners will be a one-time cost, honor cost for banner displayed for four years. Banners will be displayed from May until November each year, after the four-year period, banners will be given to either the veteran or the family. Eligibility program will be determined by having honorable discharge from the United States Armed Forces. The design of the banner will include veteran's name, branch of service, and photograph, the City of Jamestown will design the banners, the banners will be displayed on the lot posts located in the City of Jamestown, the City of Jamestown will be responsible for the installation and removal of the banners. Application of the banner, banner program will be available online or in person at City Hall, the application will require approved formal discharge from the United States Armed Forces and payment of the hundred dollar banner fee. Application will be reviewed and approved by the City of Jamestown. Approved applicants will be notified of their acceptance into the program or provided with information on the banner design process. That's for sure.
And then we'll have a second reading in a row, so, that's just, that's for you. Uh, next thing on our agenda is the Climate Vision Weather Radar Lease Agreement, and, um, Judge Markham has worked a lot on this, and I think, uh, HK has actually reviewed all the, uh, the lists that they sent, and, uh, I think he's gonna talk about what he's found and what he thinks.
Judge made an excellent presentation of last, uh, last meeting, and I was presenting the lease, apparently it's a template they use everywhere. Uh, it's a twenty-year lease with this, uh, I don't know what to call it, uh, judge, radar, tornado detection.
It's, it's a radar, it's just a smaller version of what the, the doctor.
Which detects tornadoes on the ground. It's pretty exciting, I talked to some people today, they say this comes as a problem to be able to really predict what a tornado is on the ground. This will give us, uh, opportunity to do that. The lease, I think, is very generous from their standpoint, they did draft it, usually you try to put things in a lease if you're drafting it to your advantage, it's a very equal, even-handed, it's a twenty-year lease, uh, but, uh, there's all kinds of provisions in here for modifications and changing and moving and the kind of data that we need to move or whatever to give them notice, uh, the consideration of this is our city being able to ask, to access this service. I don't, of course, it's something I've never seen before, and I don't know who around here has, but I don't see anything negative in this, if we're willing to have a structure on water tank up here, you know, that, that we can work around through or whatever.
I was gonna say, I, yeah, I was gonna say, I had a couple of folks from the National Weather Service was here last week, um, they actually wanna see it happen, and, and go back again, will be the first site in Kentucky, one and only two. We're, we're going to cover a, and guys from National Weather Service admitted that they got a gap where we're at. So that's what it's gonna do, is it'll fill in a gap that we've had for years and years, and I asked them straight out, federal government's not gonna give you any money to put any new radars in, right? Nope, not anytime soon, right? Nope, this will help them, they, and they're hoping that they get access, which I think they're going to.
Just let me ask you this, um, this is something that any entity can purchase, so, right?
Service from, yes.
I mean, uh, radio station, TV station, the municipalities.
Agriculture.
Agriculture.
Lots of different.
And we, that we get as a part, that's why we get paid, because we access it, we conserve the city, the citizens of Jamestown, uh, access of this.
Exactly, and if the, the National Weather Service gets it, it'll give us better coverage, uh, whatever people listen to from there. Uh, she sent me a thing this week, uh, it was an, I, I reported to the mayor, it was from what AccuWeather showed, the radar, and what they showed.
Right.
On an event that happened to us when all the storms were just occurring, it was much clearer, was it not?
Amazing.
For what they saw here compared to what AccuWeather showed in there.
Well, I talked to a guy today, and he follows this, and he said, well, the problem is, the National Weather Service said, whoa, you kind of look for curls where the tornado may be, but this actually brings it, what do you?
Four thousand feet, is what the National Weather Service, so, you can fly an airplane under four thousand feet, what's that, what, I mean, everybody says fly under the radar, that's what that means.
Yeah.
Get under the radar.
So this really tells you, it's underground, and, and this covering the area between here and Middle Tennessee, I guess.
Sixty miles.
Sixty mile radius from here, and then they're putting another one in, in northeastern part of the state, now it'd be, because Jackson's got it, Palooka's got it, the National Weather Service and it was kind of, so the meteorologist in charge, which was the main, the main guy in Louisville, was in my office last week.
And I, but I thought she said maybe one in Smyrna, Tennessee or something.
They do, and then, and then, uh, they, uh, they put some, they, they put one in Charlotte, because Charlotte was a big spot that had a gap. So they, they put a lot, this is the first one in Kentucky, and the company is in Louisville, that's kind of crazy, but, um, and they, they got some funding to get them going, but they're actually selling into a bunch of different, as you said, you know, it's agriculture, weather station, TV stations, uh, apps, apps, so.
I, I see, I, I think it's a good thing, guys. Um, did I understand her correctly that, like, radio stations in Russell County would get free access?
No, I think, uh, they'll probably give that to the, the National Weather Service, and if they're, they're, they're tapped within, yes, uh, we'll do training, they'll actually do training here, and then they'll decide who, who ends up getting it, so.
But we can't sell it, though, no, we can't, but I thought, I thought.
But that's, that's a profit, Bill, because of radio stations.
But I had understood her to say, uh, perhaps wrongly, that, like, the local school board here would have free access to it, or local radio stations would have free access.
No, I don't think the radio station, but the radio station will still be able to get the information, but they may have to pay for it.
They may have to buy it.
Yeah, they may have to buy it, because they're, they're, they're a profit.
Yeah.
You know, we're here because, okay, so, we're governments.
And there will be training for the people who are in tornadoes, who's that have the ability to look to see it.
Right.
That will be able to.
And they'll do the.
Put the information out.
Right, they'll do the worst storms, waters, studies, the differences, the difference in radar, because this radar, if you look at it and are in study, it's high resolution, smaller, more compact unit, but it's much better than, than what we have currently, because we don't have anything, we're just.
Okay.
Can I make one more statement?
Yes, sure.
They could have picked anybody else around us in ten counties and done the same thing. But it was one phone call to Eric PM, and then he come and saw me, and I thought it was a host, because it wasn't gonna cost me anything. So I called and said, hey, how soon can you come down here, because I want to find out that, and that's how I'll pay. And they got one over to Derek County, put it on that big tower next to Walmart or wherever, but after they came here, they decided they wouldn't try it in here.
Motion going with.
Sir?
I'll make a motion and do it.
A motion?
I second.
A second, all in favor, uh, if this is the sign, the contract to give them the right to.
Yeah, can I, can I say something then?
Yes.
This, this part worth it is that we have the motion made and seconded to enter lease agreement, the city with Climate Vision Operating LLC, for the purpose of installing radar, uh, equipment on the water, is that water tower identified, tower?
It's industrial.
Industrial authority, industrial parts.
It's industrial, yeah.
That's good.
I've got a motion, I've got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You wanna let them know?
I'll text her and email her since I'm located here.
Thanks, that's good. Thank you for all the work on it, I think it's great if we can have that quick information, you know, might save a little.
It may be like September before it's up, but it'll start all the process, because we're, we're in line anyways.
That's good, appreciate it. Mr. Wilkerson, did you have something, uh, I think?
I'd be delighted if you could indulge me for just a minute, I know I'm not only agenda, so, if, if you want to install action, I understand, it's mainly to put it on, but I was here last year for Art Works, I wear several hats, one, I had to say, as a board member of the Art Works, and Art Works is tickled to have you guys as well, and I think we
Yes, we love.
Very, uh, great camaraderie, but, and then that's why I came, but I, I have to say, I was taken coming in with the camaraderie of, of the, and the, uh, just the nature of the people, people were laughing, having fun, and, you know, you have all sectors, you have the private sector, the public sector, all working together, state, local, county, and, you know, I think social states, that's how it's supposed to work, if we could just make that happen in some other places. James, you know, doing the right thing, and the square looks great, things are, things are happening, and, and it's, it's wonderful, I applaud you for all, for all your work, and having said that, I'm here to beg, of course, and Art Works, as you know, uh, does a summer camp every year for students, uh, we had over seventy-five students last year for camp, and we anticipate that in the near future, this time, this time we're going to do at least part of it, maybe all of it, at our new acquisition, Creek, which are primarily.
I'm not familiar, I, I'm amazed to read about that.
Yes, well, we have acquired the creek and great lands, we're thinking forward, what might happen down there, uh, art, art is part of nature, so we're gonna conduct the camp down there, but we may later build other buildings, just, uh, as you know, we're doing, gonna just put a sewer line in down there, thank you all for the cooperation on the sewer project, that's going forward, uh, at the expense of, of Art Works, and that will improve that facility as well. Uh, but immediate need is every year, uh, we look for sponsorships for, uh, scholarships for students that can't afford to attend camp, and as you know, we have plenty of those, uh, last year you all were gracious enough to fund ten scholarships, um, and that was, uh, that last year, inflation's got us again, last year it was a hundred and ninety bucks a piece, so two hundred dollars this year, so, I came, I came begging for nineteen hundred last year, I'm here for two thousand this year. So, but I understand if that's not something you want to address tonight, you want to take it up to your next meeting, that's perfectly fine, I understand that, because I know you need, having been your chair, I know you need to be on the agenda, uh, Madam Mayor, so, uh, but that's my request, if you could be gracious enough to fund those scholarships again for this year, they would go to the kids that truly need it, and Art Works is growing, I don't know if you're aware or not, but the, the, uh, the Smart Stop Program, preschool program is, is growing, and so many kids are touched by it, and we, and we also offer scholarships during the year, uh, to, to kids that can't, so, it's not just for kids that can pay and families, and anybody who's available serves at Art Works, and I'm happy anytime, I, I may not know the answer, because I'm not involved in the day-to-day operation, but I'm happy to get any answer, any, answering the questions you might have, or get the answers to them.
I'll make a motion, we fund ten scholarships again this year, second.
Go second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, thank you very much.
You made a good trip tonight.
And don't, uh, don't forget, we are, what, two years out of our bicentennial for Russell County, you know, we, yeah, so, so we gotta tie that to the Declaration of Independence, and we've got the namesakes there, and we've got all kinds of connections there. And one other thing, Larry, you mentioned the, the, the project, uh, possibly for a community center slash farmer's market, and I'm sure you're aware of the one in Somerset.
Yes.
Uh, that, that is ideal venue for the type of thing you're talking about, the one in East Mount Vernon Street, they can open that up for open air, close it down, if y'all seen that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it's a phenomenal structure, if there's anything I can do to help on that project, I'm, I'm willing to, thanks for that.
Well, we're, we're working on that, we have been for a while, we just tried to look at different avenues of ways to go and ways that we could, that we can make it happen, so, we're, we're gonna continue to work on that, we have looked at the one in Somerset, it's a great building, I mean, it's.
Next international strike, too.
Yes.
Funded by Citizens National Way, should I say?
I wanted to, but I wasn't.
Funded by Citizens National Way.
Oh, wow.
No idea, there's a big sign.
Put a video on, hard package.
Hey, we knew the founder would put a video, but, yeah, we'll continue to work on that, yeah, any ideas or anything that anybody has to throw in there, we're always glad to have them. So, but, um, all-terrain vehicles is the next thing.
How come Councilman Richards is smiling?
Something we've got to talk about, I think, and we've got some research.
I put, I put lots of time in on this.
I'm mad.
I don't, check, that's. What do you want to do, a podcast?
We want to know what.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all, thanks.
Although you all may be interested in.
Yes, you may. All-terrain vehicles?
Yes. There is a, um, proposal that we access all-terrain vehicles so that the people can, you don't have to drive their regular cars down the square from, from the marina. And I don't know how much you want me to talk about it, but there's three levers of these, so, first is the golf carts, we already have that. And I don't know how well that's working out, but I don't see a lot of carts.
Don't do away with it, I just bought one.
Not batteries, there.
But then you move to the other level, which is the, um, the, the mounted, the, I'm sorry, the, the OTV, the off-highway vehicles, which is a motorized, motorized vehicles that are designed to travel over thirty-five miles an hour. Now, that's the side-by-sides, what else, ten, oh, I mean, uh, dog, I mean.
I don't know if that gets all the way up into the racers or not, but I, I don't think we need to have maybe the racers.
Well, I met by video with the people of Frankfurt, and there is a provision in the statutes for a regional recreation authority to be developed, where we have trailways and waterways, that we can actually, I think, enact an ordinance to permit the operation of these all-terrain vehicles on the streets of Jamestown, that has to be by permission of the state, because it will be on state-operated highways, and it's not be permitted. We got a lot of people in Somerset and have it, so, it's a big deal, there are apparently some, uh, representatives over the mountains that were really excited about this. They already have about a ten county area, I think, where they can travel around all those, uh, you talked about that, did you, how'd that go about?
Huh, I know a lot of people that's over in there, because they will come out of the mountains, they actually have, over there, they have spots marked off that are for like your regular TV, just one person type.
That's what this guy said.
They have parking places where they pull up to the businesses, things like that, I don't think we need to go that far, by no means. But you know, with down there, how many there are in the area, and I'm sure you all get a lot of business from them. Even though they're illegal, they're still doing it, okay?
You mean, all, already?
Already, yeah.
Outside, outside.
Yeah, but sometimes they're not always outside a lot, because you will see them all over occasionally.
Now, since we're on video, I'll tell everybody, I talked to these people, they said it's gonna take a lot of cooperation among everybody, city council, uh, legal services, the law enforcement, because it's a big deal for law enforcement to deal with this thing, because there's no, there's no tag on them.
Right.
You know, there's no identity on them, and, uh, you know, everybody has to understand it's lawful, uh, we don't want to pass an ordinance permitting this, and we're a long way from there right now, but, where that there's a contradiction going on, on what you can do and what you can't do, as far as these things are concerned. I had no idea that it was such a big deal, a lot of weight apparently did, but these people are enthused, there's two or three state representatives that are real excited about it, and the statute's laid out, ideally, uh, if we can. And the statute's laid out. Ideally, uh, if we can somehow work our way on this peninsula all the way to the lake, uh, let people, um, access the square on this, you know, that it would be.
My concept on it is I have spoken.
You did.
To HK earlier in the week. We all know that people in Harper's friends, places like that, say they don't want an extension. Well, they're not on the city street right now. So they couldn't really drive from their house up here without being illegal.
That's true.
This might encourage some of those communities if they would want to be brought in and extended to the city.
Well, we follow that on Zilly Creek.
Yeah.
I've got a question. On their golf court, golf cart ordinance, the, uh, it was required to be thirty-five miles an hour or less, and there's one section between here and the marina where it goes up to forty-five and then back down to thirty-five, I think. What's, what, this new law, what's the difference?
You could, it has to go over thirty-five. These things apparently, they're supposed to be able to keep up with fast cars.
Mine will run fifty, fifty-five miles.
So you let it go. So it's not something that you're running over.
I think seven K's can, it's run ninety-five.
Yeah, I had one before that.
But anyway, it's a different, it's a different.
Yeah, it's a whole different thing than what it was.
So this would imply the golf carts are running down there. I mean, this would be an ordinance that would be specifically these vehicles that were capable of.
Yes, and I can't see a golf cart coming down there because of the speed and it's not Roger.
The question I got, sir, uh, insurance, okay, if they, if they hit a car, if they hit a car, uh.
Is there a, not have to be licensed?
They're going to have. The person that's driving by law has to be at least sixteen. That's the law.
But I'm telling them insured.
Even on them, on the side of the.
Yeah, you're actually no one under sixteen is even. I'm not even supposed to let my grandchildren drive on my own farm that's under sixteen, to be truthful.
What's required on insurance on them? Are you saying?
That's all, I think that would be up to.
I think.
I think.
I think that's how you write a grant to your order. Yeah, you could require it, and then you would maybe have a sticker that's numbered. That way, Jeff and them, if they stop one, it better have the city sticker on it.
I think we'd have to require insurance because we let those things on the road, and they blow in somebody.
Exactly. I think.
Not insured.
Or.
Shady.
I think you can get people on golf carts trying it just because that's what they have them. So if you required that, then that would knock them out.
I think since the golf cart piece come into play, there's been two inspected.
I think two passed, yes.
Two.
I've done it before, but there's only two passed.
Mine would have been passed because I put turn signals and seat belts on it.
Well, this, this statute says the local government, they have got restringence, local ordinances governing OHB, safety equipment and operations specified. So we can, you know, you can decide what addition of requirements you would put on these things, on these things.
I mean, you can make it to where, to get that inspection, that sticker.
I can say lots of hours.
Those, those are inspected just like a regular vehicle. I mean, no, even the golf carts. I mean, to pass inspection, like, it is, it's the exact same class that, that Sheriff's Park goes through to for rebuilt vehicles. It is the exact same list. That's why they don't pass. I mean, they're, it's, every, if you wanted to push it, I don't know that any would actually pass.
Well, it's got to have four, six highway non-hybrid tires, rear wheel brakes, headlights, taillight, brake lights, red reflectors, working buffers, parking brakes, spark arrestor, whatever that is. I mean, it has to be equipped.
It actually kind of got me because the new thing that's on there, you don't have to have turn signals.
On these?
Right, they don't call for turn signals. And they used to call for a horn. They don't call for a horn. It kind of supplied, but you got to put a helm on it.
Yeah, see, the golf cart, the golf carts, it was turn signals, it was horn. It was seat belts, it was a working windshield.
This statute says proof of insurance is inside the OHB at all times.
You have to have that in the insurance. Which matters, because insurance.
So it's a big deal, and, um.
Why, why would this? We talked about this. Why would the state not do this statewide?
Right.
That way you watch them, and, and everybody gets a percentage. I mean, like, like motorcycle. I mean, there's no difference to me than the side-by-side or the Harley that's running down there that don't pay taxes.
I think that, what this guy says, that everybody's unique. You start out up in the mountains on these strip lines, you know, people moving around the eight county area there. We kind of need some of that criteria. We've got some off-road areas, you know, down around. Uh, and we're also, what, we're, what, a water trail? What is that?
Water.
We're trail town. You got water?
Yeah, it, it is. It's, it's, yeah, it's hiking, it's, uh, and, uh, maybe a river.
Really, Tyler's right. They're really not by difference in that, and a motorcycle, there's none. I mean, in a way.
Then they are in part trail.
Except that they're licensed and motorcycles is licensed.
Yeah, I think, I think. That's sad when you're going on the trail.
I bet the vehicle on it is on a motorcycle anyway.
So I was, if you want, if you all want to keep moving into this, uh, I talked to these people today, about an hour, about five or six guys, they were excited. They're trying to promote the council. There's two or three people in the legislature that's trying to, all these announcers around, want to get into it. And he was encouraging people to spread. I thought it was just for East Kentucky. He said, no, any area can create a regional authority where our town could. I think the whole county could. Um, but, uh, service of Jamestown can't on our own. But it's not going to be quick.
No.
We're going to have to jump this in boots. And probably talk to some people that I have not done yet to have implemented this, and see what other hoops we can look at.
My main concern would be, uh, if we adopt an ordinance or pass an ordinance to permit it, it's kind of going to be similar to the way the golf court, cart ordinance has been. Uh, you said there's only been two that's passed inspection, but we can see lots, lots of them out there running out. So they've taken, you know, people think, well, we passed it. They passed an ordinance. I'm all right with that.
People misunderstand. They don't know what they're doing.
Guess I may burn it all over here then. I just got mine, but my old, and I know with a lot, I'll be.
Well, if, if we do an ordinance, it would just have to be outlined what's permitted and what's not. That's what you would have to do if we decided that.
But I mean, I was, I was excited. I mean, these people were excited. I mean, I, I spent probably forty-five minutes with these people, the local government and transportation, and we had to work this Somerset. That's where our district transportation people are.
Are they at Somerset?
I don't know. I'm not pushing them.
We did it, they would.
Just wondering.
Well, I don't think they do.
I've never seen one.
Well, if we permit them, and, you know, then everybody just starts, well, they're permitted. So I ride mine, and they don't follow through and ask for requirements with the insurance.
Well, Jeff's going to have to crack that.
And they don't follow through with the insurance.
We, we also have insurance information. I can give you all, I did insurance for a lot of years, so, uh, insured a lot of side-by-sides, all the golf carts, all that kind of stuff. Um, I, I personally think it'd be great for, you know, bringing business to town. Um, the thing that you have to watch out for is a lot of these policies you can buy for UTVs and all that. Um, they can be designed, the policy language can exclude, uh, public roadways from the liability insurance of the policy. So you're just going to have to figure out, how can you verify that this particular off-road vehicle can be on a public roadway and provide liability insurance? Because if you, uh, were to say, yep, he passed all the checklists, he's got insurance, he gets in an accident, and there's someone injured, well, they're going to more likely sue that person, and they can say, well, Jamestown, say, Jamestown paid sure I had insurance. They said I was good to go. So then there, then you got to be involved in a lawsuit.
And they certainly pick it apart, too.
Yeah.
So you have to make sure that there was some language or from the insurance company said, this vehicle is, you know, provides, or this policy provides liability insurance for public roadway usage.
Right.
Because we did a lot of them, and, yeah, if you want to insure your, your TV for off-road use only, well, it's, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks. But if you want to use it insured for public roadways, then, you know, it's dumb. Everybody, no one wants to pay for insurance, so they'll be, yeah, that policy. Well, then there's an issue if there's an accident.
And then if you insured it for off-road, then you have to get on the road, but then you're not covered.
You're not covered. You're not covered.
And then they could come back on the city, possibly.
Well, if you, if you were to verify everything and say, yeah, you, you're allowed to drive this vehicle, you gave permission as somebody to drive their off-road vehicle on public roadways, and because you verified the insurance, then you could be liable, absolutely.
What's that about?
Yeah, but I think it's good. You just got to figure out how you can verify the insurance that it is legitimate for public roadways.
Sure.
Some policies language has it on the ID card, so no. So we'd have to bring up.
It'd have to be a verification process.
You'd have to make sure it's very clear. You have to bring the policy or something, some type of insurance language for your company, so it's for public roadway.
And we have to make sure that we, whenever we approve that, to let them be that the policy they had was in effect and covered that, because I think those six months down the road will change to something else.
Yes.
So just as long as we make sure at the time.
At the time, yeah, you verified it, you have those.
That should clear that.
Yep.
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to make them have to do it every year.
Just like a car.
Yeah. You know, have your, have your insurance verification at least every year.
My people do have these, mine's the outstate, those kind of, those interior. And suddenly, and you're on the road for six months at a time.
That was the one thing that caused my concern, was the city, if the city passed something, and then one gets involved in an accident, then it's going to come back, and then there's somebody that's involved in accidents. So if you legalize them, so they're over here on the road. My twelve-year-old kid got in it and drove down the road or whatever. Uh, we're ordered by two states that allow them, Ohio and Tennessee, if the state representatives, Mr. Cooper's talked to, are up on that, let us pass it statewide, and the state gets the taxes and the revenue off that. I mean, that's a big revenue, I think. Uh, every time you go to Gaffenberg, you see them down there. They have a plate on them, just like a motorcycle has. So you're, I assume they have to go in and do the license and the insurance, do like you do to something for a vehicle. Uh, I'm, I don't want to say anything about people coming up from the marina to come to the square. That's all great, but we don't have one of those off, off-road parks around here where we're trying to get people to get gas and food. So those other places in eastern part of the state, West Virginia, wherever Tennessee has that, um, so that's just my take on this one.
This guy also said these are pilot programs, and to advise you all that they could be withdrawn. We might get all geared up, and they'll say, well, it's not working out, and they put up here much more. That's all I have at this point. I'm willing to go ahead and bring something more, more, uh, sensitive later. And maybe we'll need somebody in the committee to look at, you know, two, three of them.
Make me some sense.
Bring the, bring the message. Keith Dunleavy, I wish he's checking here all day, if he went through something. Counting lives. Keith.
Raymond.
Raymond.
Yeah, I wish he was.
Raymond told him that if he could get it done here.
Raymond?
That he would be willing to work on the vehicle. I would rather see it counted. That way you don't have to worry about.
And that's probably the way.
That would be the best.
I don't know. I mean, they're already certified. I'll, I'll be honest, being there, it's not too bad to go to certain patients, anyway, if we keep this up. Yeah, if that's required, too. So to do that, I mean, like Sheriff's Park would, you know, instead of just like the, uh, three vehicle, so.
Outstate titles and stuff. They have a horn that they can just put up for the sound. And then the outstate, that they, would you, you have to kind of, they have to make inspection.
They, we took the same place then. Just want to be there, you know, I think.
I was thinking, you know, if you did it, like, whether you had an inspection.
Yeah, they, they.
I don't think you'd even hold on and take a picture or do the tracks first.
What kind of water if you would be interested more in pursuing, maybe, UTV thing countywide?
I, I don't know what happened before, but I think it was brought up and just kind of dropped. And it's probably a deal, you could probably pass it on county roads, but I don't know that you could do it on state roads. Tony will know better.
Yeah, this.
This is a whole little bit.
You can?
Yes.
So you know what happened before? Because I know it was brought up one time before, and you got shot. Right.
The golf carts is different. Golf carts are not supposed to be on state roads, but these can be because they go faster than us.
I've got one that runs seventy mile an hour.
You've never had it before.
That's what they told you when you hopped it. That's just what they told you when you hopped it.
I had it to sixty-five, so.
Give us a deal, Tom, the park.
I know you're also wild.
So you're saying a couple?
Yeah, whenever that came up as far as the county line, I remember that you had one, maybe two magistrates before, because they're very, well, affected in a very positive way. And then everybody else was just like, what are you talking about? You know, it was more dropped, basically.
Are you talking about when those people from J-Biz and that area were trying to get approval that? Yeah, riding golf carts.
I think you all was on the places to, whichever they were saying.
Anywhere around the way, if you know. And we're right about that.
Just been, we've had people ask, you know, that one get brought up about being ethical. That a lot of people that have on it. So we're kind of trying to do some, HK's done some research to see what the rules and laws and stuff are behind it, but that's pretty much what we're.
Could, could it be done, I mean, in certain areas?
I mean, city limits of Jamestown, I think, I think it would count, yes.
That's quite.
Would have to be countywide, didn't it?
I mean, you might get more by if you did that.
You're more pro.
Somebody could say, okay, you know, um, third district could have one, and the first district could.
I think you could, could.
You know, that would be a way.
You could designate yours.
Basically, those plate areas. Them plate areas around J-Biz.
Here, that's all, third district and, and then first district's here, so if you could do it by districts, it probably would work. I mean, I don't know. We just have to talk to them and see.
Well, we were just kind of trying to discuss it and then wonder what your thoughts were to get into the, the county lines instead of just the city, wondering if it's something.
Well, the answer may be not to do it countywide, but just areas in county.
Areas, right, yeah.
Be allowed.
So you want to just try to find out more information?
Sure.
And see, maybe it would be a few.
Okay, yeah. Can you make this?
Yes, sir. Maybe areas of the county that are contiguous to the city limits, make it flow back, you know, flow back and forth better.
Like going to the Jamestown Marina?
Yes, sir.
Seven divisions off the way those are. I mean, we can act, we can do it to the marina when they make go. We just can't do the type.
That is true.
That's what we can't do.
No, it's not, yeah. It's not city. Okay, so let's just see what more information you can get, and then I guess we'll bring it back up for discussion.
Yeah, just give me a time. I mean, I would, give me a little while, add some more to it. And I like, I like to call all these other, someone else who's done it.
And see what they have.
And that's over the mountain where I am. This is a pilot project, and he's. That's over the mountain where I am. This is a pilot prop and he said we can, it can change anytime, so that's something you need to realize. If there's a bunch of activity that's bad, then maybe say we're looking back up on it.
How long has it been going on?
Well, this statute.
One more.
June twenty. No, it was put to college or something. June, June twenty-four, hundred twenty-four.
Two years.
Yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't work.
And it's, it's, okay, there's a twilight or whatever on it, twenty twenty-four, it has to be extended.
So it could or could not, twenty-four, and then I'll watch.
But this guy thinks at least for the next five years, we're good.
I was in Lloyd, Utah a couple of years ago and the whole town was full, side by side, everywhere.
Where was this now?
Oh, yeah, Utah. I mean, because they do all that stuff and now in town, it's, I mean, it's kind of like Peachtree City in Georgia where it's all Velcro's. And you even have overpasses there for Velcro, so.
I think it'd be, it'd be unique.
I'm done.
Thank you, thank you, Judge. See you, Grant.
Any other thoughts before we, you know, just get some more information. H K's, you know, as you can find, and we'll bring it up to the tables. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about or need to bring up?
I have just a couple of little things real quick that I want to, they, I've been writing on, it's not defined. They contacted me just to invite everyone. The D A D building in Russell Springs is getting ready to host a animal oil fairing where they're gonna start doing spay of new cats and dogs. They'll be coming, it's a mobile unit, but it will be coming in Russell County. Right now they don't have anything. So this is something that they're getting ready to start. They're gonna have an open house on Sunday, May twenty-first at two to four. If anybody wants to attend, it's just an open house for that, that they just wanted me to pass it on to all the council members and if anybody wants to, that's May twenty-first on Sunday. That actually did this Sunday. At two to four at the Veterans Building in Russell Springs. They, you know, to see that, pass it, anybody wants to. The other thing, real quick, I think Tyler passed out everybody reports that we've got on rate study. It's something that we're looking at, that we're gonna have to address and go over. We've got some members, they've been working on this for a period of time. It's something that we're gonna have to, to look at and make some decisions on. So if you all will, just go over that. See if you have any questions. The guy, is he gonna be back down, baby, anytime?
I think he's just playing, he'll come to that meeting.
To the special call meeting. Yeah, he will be here to go over kind of everything on here, how he's come to these numbers, where it's all, just how it's being summed up and what we're looking at and we'll have to do that at a special call meeting at night. So June sixth, I believe, is when we are gonna try to look at doing that, but we'll sit that out. As a reminder, before time, but if you will, we'll go over that because there's a lot of information in there. We've met several times with him, tried to get down to the best we could, tried to get some of the number down as low as we could without getting into, you know, it's where he feels like is where we have to be. So look over that if you will. Got any questions, yeah, if you want. I guess deal with me or David or Tyler, I'm gonna deal with him and find out, got any questions before the special call meeting. It's, it's, we're gonna have to address.
This guy here, he was a couple of years ago or something like that.
He's been here the last, he's been here three or four.
He's, he's worked with us, you know, three or four times in the last probably eight months or something like that. We've done a rate study since seven.
Seventeen years.
Yeah, and then before that it was twenty-ten. So we've only, we've only changed it one time and I think, it's not like, you know, gas prices, we walk in there and changing all that. It's something that's, I mean, it's kind of, it's just a matter of.
Probably just.
Looking at it on six.
Just the way it is. And just like a lot of other things this day and time.
And that, that's things that we've looked at. I mean, just like the tax stuff that you all, you all pass. And we, we were running on six seventy-five, losing money every tab we made until we went to the, you know, actual cost. So, I mean, this is the exact same thing, chemicals, motors, everything is through the roof. And we had pushed it, like, really, really, we pushed it probably two years now to get good numbers, know exactly what we're dealing with with all air numbers, all the changes coming with the COVID and, and nothing's went by the hell. I mean, you know, chemical prices skyrocketed.
Chemicals. And it's still, it's still.
Well, and the thing of it is, is what I do with certain stuff, some of the stuff we use to get now, some of it is, it's, some of it's over a hundred, shit higher.
Yeah, and somebody can't do it all. And that's what we're running to do.
Some of the stuff you wait, you ask about it and I'd say, three months.
Yeah.
On some things.
I mean, other thing is that you never know what's gonna happen one day whenever we have to replace a mile of line because it's, it's old, that it's all breaking.
Or to quit with water.
Took in extra.
They feel, they've looked at all that and they've tried to build, you know, that stuff in there where we're not stuck. Like that happens in. And, and these went out.
I've been quite a study then to.
Built a lot of study, put into it, we still got the invoices and stuff that we have, everything that's our cost, you know. Everything's going up, insurance, insurance is going up. We're getting a increase in that this year. We already been notified that. It's what they, eleven, like, it's eleven point six percent on health insurance. We haven't even gotten the quote yet back on the buildings and everything else that we have. So when everything keeps going up, you don't have any choice, but we gotta face it and address it.
Hope you're gonna have it, that's, that's the way it is, I mean.
So anyway.
He'll have that, he'll have that too. He'll, he's gonna show, he's got pretty good presentation already, but he was building more slides to show like communities their size and with waters who are playing, what, what their charge is, you know, and we'll have a comparison sheet. There's one in there now, but he'll have more slides when he gets here this season.
Our bright seems like, as always, been pretty good anyway.
Yes.
Great, y'all, I must say, y'all, what it were, heated down there too. Y'all need to be recognized for that too.
It's one of the lowest around when you get the counties that got listed. It's one of the lowest and it shows we haven't had an increase in a long time and you can only sustain it so long. Okay, nobody has anything else? I need a motion.
I, I'm gonna own the wall here that we're gonna tear down. Can we get that down before Lake Fest?
Yeah, I, I don't think it'd be, I don't think it'd be that a good deal. Just we're, we're about, I mean, running our many and stuff, we're about twelve tabs behind right now. So Russell, we got something to call about. We'll go on there on, we should be able to get it. It shouldn't be that a good deal to, to take down.
Do we want gravel out or something through there too? Or are you gonna leave the concrete? What do you think, Tony?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's concrete right now.
I know it's gonna make it into parking. Do we want to?
I don't know, concrete.
Love this part on the concrete.
Why do you add?
For an A R, yeah.
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 We'll just try to smooth it up with that wall and then we'll bring the gravel up, make sure it's further up.
Maybe go ahead and clean out what they're talking about. Make as much area back there as you can.
I know, yeah. We can do right there, right, if you're marking and stuff will be interesting.
Need to check the bit cover. I said that, you know, put corners. Better make sure it works, okay, you say that too. Make a place to park that.
They did that for sale. They took it down, they paid me that for sale. And they, one time they did this for sale.
Make a nice position for city park. Who owns that garage or Rick?
Jamie, I want to apologize to you because I have a message from Derek Poston that he wanted me to review during you being recognized and I I forgot it, so I'm gonna read it to you real quick, okay? You know, everybody's gone. I, I don't want to, I cannot read it to you. It says, congratulations Officer Jamie Rogers by being named School Resource Officer of the Year for Kentucky. I appreciate you leading by example, doing the job of School Resource Officer for Jamestown Elementary and for Russell County. The city of Jamestown and Jamestown Elementary is blessed to have you working there and setting the example for all to follow that works as officers in the Russell County school system and across the state of Kentucky. I am proud of all of the officers and deputies that work in the school system protecting our children and staff from today's violence across the United States. Thank you, sir, and keep up the great work. I got it in there, so, gosh, he's probably asking tomorrow, did you read that? I did it, but. So. So is that pretty much?
Yeah.
Just check on that wall?
Try and get that wall down for Lake Fest.
Okay, all right. Nobody has anything else? I need a motion to adjourn.
No, you can turn.
Thank you.